I would like to welcome the ladies and gentlemen who come here to attend the meeting. First of all, I would like to give you the floor to speak one after another. For deputations and individuals who attend today's meeting, each of you will have three minutes to speak. To facilitate the meeting, the secretary has already made arrangements to have a timer and to have a buzzer to remind you of the time limit. I would like to remind deputations and individuals who attend today's meeting that the submissions that you have given us as well as the oral submission that you make, they will not be protected by the Legislative Council Powers and Privileges Ordinance that is cap 382 in relation to the protection as well as the exemption. I would like to give the floor to the Greeners Action. Good afternoon. I'm Sir Niamh Shih representing Greeners Action. In relation to the development of Northeast NT, we have the following views to make. I'd like to comment on sustainable development. We have been talking about this for ten, twenty years. And then we want to strike a balance between economic development and environmental protection. We don't want to be having imbalanced economic development. For Long Mai Beach, the third runway, as well as the government hill, we see that the government is emphasizing the economic development of Hong Kong. It seems that it is being done at expense of environmental protection. So we want to emphasize sustainable development. And then in the case of the development of the West Rail, a lot of harm was done to the environment. And then what they did was that they tried to spray some water on the land and then they say that it is compensatory planting. And they think that by growing grass, it is a matter of compensation. But in fact, it has been fenced off and animals cannot get onto their grassland. So is it really remedial in nature? But I don't think they have any functions at all. And then for the NT and E, over 10,000 villages will lose their homes. And then for active agricultural land, thirteen percent or even more will be lost. Now for those who are not armed with any power or wealth, does it mean that they can be victimized in such a way? In Hong Kong, we always say that Hong Kong needs development. Citizens need housing. It seems that they are the ultimate weapon. And it seems that we are giving them a license to damage the environment of Hong Kong. I think we need to have sustainable development. We shouldn't kill off our agricultural development. We know that food prices are going up both in Hong Kong and elsewhere in the world. In many places, they're developing food autonomy. They try to have their own agricultural activities so as not to be dependent on food imports. In Hong Kong, we think the agricultural land is valueless and agricultural land is being sold to develop housing. But in fact, by having agriculture, it means that we can be self-sufficient and it means that we can also cut down on waste. In fact, we have got many food wastes. Take NT Northeast as an example. For Ma Po, they would compost their food waste and then they use it for planting. And then they have markets and then food can be sold. So this is much better than just building shopping malls one after another because nowadays our children don't even know what is meant by agriculture. I would like to invite Mr. Yung Kai Lai from Ma Shipu Landlords Alliance. As a small landowner, I would like to make the following comments. We can't stop the development of Hong Kong. We also support it. However, the approach prevailing is problematic. As small landowners, we live off the agricultural land, but the development proposal doesn't take our interest into account. We don't even mention what is meant by rehousing or whatsoever. We don't need rehousing. We've always been there. It's a matter of compensation. We are most interested in how we are going to be looked after. You cover a large piece of land in this proposal. I think we should just assign a piece of land for us to be relocated. I just want to clarify this point. I hope the panel can give us an answer. Yes, later on, we are going to ask the administration to give an overall reply. Have you got more to say? No, not really. Next, Mr. Ng He Man from the Conservancy Association. Good afternoon. I represent the CA. I would like to talk about the conservation of Long Valley. Well, for the Conservancy Association and the Hong Kong Bird Watching Society, we have been working there for seven years, a long, long time. Basically, we agree that the government should spend more resources on the conservation of this area. But then in terms of planning, we're still very worried. What I want to say is that for the planning of Long Valley, I don't think we should adopt the same model for the Betland Park. We have had meetings with the consultants. We can see that the consultants try to open a lot of areas to the public, to the visitors, to the tourists, so that the dry agricultural land will be filled with water, turning them into water features. I'm afraid that the CA and the Bird Watching Society will have their efforts being aborted and damaged. We don't want to go back to that kind of model. I hope the administration can understand this point. So we are concerned about this aspect of the Long Valley development. The second point is about the planning for agricultural development. I hope the administration won't have this wrong understanding. The administration thinks that all the agricultural activities can be relocated to Long Valley or in future, nine hectares of land will be given for agricultural purposes or open space will be used to resume agricultural activities. I don't think this is the same as what we are asking for. I don't think you should use this approach for agricultural planning. What we want to see is that I hope the government can find quality farmland and conserve the farmland. In fact, among the three NDAs, we have a lot of agricultural sites and near Ping Chee. This is especially so. And I don't think we are exaggerating it. In fact, the administration has got this in the OCP and this has been made by the administration itself. There is a lot of quality farm sites worthy of conservation. So I think we should give more consideration to a particular kind of land resumption. But currently, the government is trying to... I think you should get back the land for agricultural uses rather than resuming the land for non-agricultural uses. Otherwise, you can't allow the farmers to resume their agricultural activities. Thank you. Next, Middle Class Power, Mr. Feng Wei Kuo. Good afternoon. I'm Feng Wei Kuo. I represent the Middle Class Power. I support the development because without flour, we cannot have bread. For NT Northeast, we should mainly be having public housing that is more than fifty percent. It should be fifty-five percent. I don't think we get specific figures. I think the administration would like to consider the construction cost and so the government doesn't want to have too many public housing blocks. And of course, we don't want this to be another city of sadness. I think we need different kinds of housing. And then we should apply the rule of Hong Kong land for Hong Kong people. And this way, it won't become an attraction for hot money from overseas and then it will become the backyard of non-Hong Kongers. Of course, we are no different from compatriots from other places of China, but I think we should apply the principle of Hong Kong land for Hong Kong people appropriately. I haven't got a specific figure with me, but I think the government can certainly come to a proper balance, that is, how much land should be bound by the rule of Hong Kong land for Hong Kong people. And then in the light of the experience of Tin Shui Wai and other new towns, we should make sure that there will be sufficient job opportunities. Hundred and fifteen thousand people will be living there. If they are asked to go to the urban area for work, then it will add pressure to the transport network. It will also waste their time because they may be stuck in traffic jams. We also need schools, hospitals, homes for the aged so as to look after the needs of different age groups. And fourthly, for the three NDAs, we must enhance the building density. We have got 1,108 kilometers square in relation to the total area of Hong Kong, but we've only got twenty-five square kilometers land for private housing and sixteen for public housing. And therefore, because of the limited land, house prices would only go up. It is a rare opportunity to have these three sites in NT Northeast, so we should raise the density in a proper manner. Fifthly, we must make sure that we have the right transport infrastructure. Otherwise, we're repeating the mistake in Tuen Mun, that is, a lot of citizens have to be affected by serious traffic congestion. I don't think it's a matter of setting out Hong Kong. It is not a matter of having the back garden for the mainlanders. Is my time up? Yes. Next, Ms. Lin from Greenpeace. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We haven't got a long-term policy for conservation and agricultural development. Therefore, Greenpeace thinks that the government shouldn't start this massive project because this is going to damage agricultural land and damage agricultural development in Hong Kong. We must reaffirm the status of agriculture. Half of the agricultural land there will be lost. And then in fact, we have 100 hectares of active agricultural land. And Kootong in Shangshui used to be a major supply of vegetables. And Ping Chee is seeing more and more organic farms. So without a good compensatory system, if we just introduce housing developments there and with the cross-boundary crossing at Lian Tang, I'm afraid that it will be too late to refine agricultural development. Moreover, for food supply in Hong Kong, we count on imports and fresh food items used to come from Guangdong province. We have been engaged in a lot of pollution-related projects. In Guangdong, they have rapid urbanization, industrialization, and therefore, a lot of the water sources and almost ninety percent of the land in Guangdong have been polluted. So food supply and food safety have become a problem. Recently, we have a lower temperature and rainy season, so the vegetables from Guangdong have seen their prices going up. And in the past, urbanization... I mean, cities depend on central coordination of food supply. But then because of the abnormal weather conditions, the vegetable supplies have been interrupted and so the prices have fluctuated. In recent years, for major cities and even second-line, third-line cities like Dongguan and Hui Zhou, they try to give emphasis to the development of vegetable growing so as to secure a stable supply of food. But in Hong Kong, we haven't done the same. It's been ignored by the Hong Kong government. So I hope that the Hong Kong government will make sure that it will bear in mind agricultural development. On the other hand, the ecological value of agriculture has been ignored by Hong Kong government. For Long Valley, we have ecological farming, but then it should be eco-farming instead of ecotourism. If we impose tourism attractions there, we would only be aborting the efforts done to conserve the ecology there. Your time is up. Thank you. Next, from the Hong Kong Institute of Architects, Mr. Dominic Lam. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got the following to say on behalf of my institute. We support the development of NT Northeast. It should be expedited. Secondly, the planning should be visionary and it should be balanced and there must be community participation. Thirdly, in relation to public housing, our view is that we must have as much as possible public and private partnership programs. And fourthly, for the vetting mechanism we have now, it should be streamlined so as to make it more efficient and we should have one-stop service. And fifthly, for agriculture, we should promote organic farming and greenhouse farming. And the sixth one is that for our integration or connection with Shenzhen, there should be closer relationship. And for Hong Kong, I think we should plan for the future. Hong Kong should have a metro cluster of cities. And then for Lot Macho, Law Wu and Lian Tang, I think we should enhance the links. And the seventh one is that for the building density as well as the terrorist or stepped building profile, I don't think we should impose it across the board so that we can have diversity. And then for public transport, we should try to enhance the product ratio along the transport corridors. The eighth point is that we should have recovery of ways, central district cooling or district cooling systems among others. And then for city planning, I don't think we should have lots of CDAs. On the contrary, we should have small pockets of land in terms of planning development and it should have a human touch and we should have smaller developments. The tenth point is that we should have a new office node to be developed there like in Kowloon Bay. And lastly, the Hong Kong IA is more than happy to cooperate with the public and the government. We can play a part and we can give you our advice. Thank you. Next, Mr. Lee Shiu Wong. Mr. Chairman, officials, members of the political... Good afternoon. I come here to say that I want to have no removal, no demolition. This is not of any value and it lacks justice. It is said that it's for the long-term housing. I want to put this question to the Director of Bureau. Do you know what the majority of the citizens want? You're going to resume 800 hectares of land. Other than ten percent for the purpose of public housing, the rest will be for low-density luxurious homes and support facilities. It means you're wasting seven hundred hectares of land. If we want land for housing, you can go to other places. You don't need to build those three NDAs. For low-density residential developments, can we afford it? Do we need them? In fact, if there is a choice, how many people would like to live in public housing? I think many people would like to save up sufficient money to buy their own homes, but nowadays, they cannot afford it. There's no choice. So it's not a matter of demand for housing. It's not a matter of housing need. And I don't think the project can solve the problem of housing in the future. The excessive property prices is at the core of the problem. Now, for this project, over 10,000 people have to leave their homeland. At first, they think... They thought that they could take risks here and they don't know where they can go to pre-establish their homes. Therefore, no one is willing to accept this project. And their ancestral graves will also be demolished and they don't know for what they are sacrificing. And among the three NDAs, thousands of people are having their jobs there. So they will lose their homes, their jobs. So they are... Drift them out. They are evicted. So they don't even have a choice as to their style of living.
The government with accountability and concern should withdraw this inhumane and wasteful plan. The C... From the CE to the so-called principal officials to the frontline officials, they have spoken too many lies. Please no longer... Please do not lie anymore. Just stop all your propaganda and brainwashing. I urge members to help us who are helpless villagers. Let us guard these precious piece of land and oppose the scheme. Now, let me remind you that the officials attending our meeting, Mr. Chow Penn Secretary, Ms. Cheng of the Planning Department, Mr. Law of the CEDD. The next speaker, Ms. Lai Chi Ying. Recently, I believe you've seen that the administration has been doing propaganda for the NT... NDAs in the Northeast. It's a new town for Hong Kong people. It's to increase housing supply to meet people's demand for housing. But those who need housing are low-income earners. But if we look at the details of the scheme, land for residential use should account for a bigger proportion if the development is to meet housing needs. But if we look at the data provided by the administration of the 787 hectares, only 167 hectares for residential housing, which is only twenty percent of the total size. And public housing only accounts for 56 hectares or one-third or thirty percent of the total twenty percent. If it is to meet housing needs, why the land for public housing is so small? The administration owes us an answer. You keep brainwashing people. You tell people that the piece of land is for building housing for Hong Kong people meeting housing needs. But only a small proportion, just a small proportion, is for housing. Now, when you build the area... Build up the area, you need to consider the needs of the people who are already living there. And will the people who are living there be housed? In fact, many of them may not be eligible to get housing from the development. So you need to consider the situation of those who are already living there. These are my points. Thank you. Next, Ms. Yun Wei Yin. Good afternoon. Concerning the development of Kootong North. Now, Kootong will be devoted to a high-density residential area for public housing and private housing and there will also be commercial development and R and D. And what kind of jobs will be created? What kind of talents will be recruited to work there? As for Kootong North, there will be public housing and public housing tenants may not have adequate education or skills to work in the same area. Can they fit in with the demand for manpower for R and D and for commercial purposes? And if they can't get jobs in the same district, will they have to travel a long distance to work in other areas? Or would that be a replica of Tin Shui Wai? Since people cannot get jobs in Tin Shui Wai, they have to go to a long distance to get jobs. And if they can't find jobs, what can they do? Next is Mr. Yip Kim Chung. With regard to NT Northeast development. Now, in the first and second phase of engagement, I noticed that the views of non-indigenous people were ignored. Why you only consulted the rural committees, the Town Planning Board and the indigenous villages? In fact, many non-indigenous villages will be affected. You are going to demolish their homes, yet they have not been consulted. Is it reasonable? This is a large-scale development. But consultation is not fair and not comprehensive and is therefore not reasonable. Furthermore, now the administration has published a map and I noticed that the Ho Seng Heng and Ying Kong have not been included in the plan or in the map. They are indigenous villages. Why they are not included in the plan? Thank you. Next, Ms. Rainbow Chan. Thank you. Good afternoon. In the first phase of engagement, the administration said that it was to tie in with the development in Shenzhen. Now, the administration put up two APIs and said that it is a new town for the people of Hong Kong. And nearby, there is the Education City and also Lian Tang border crossing. So is the development really for the people of Hong Kong or is it only for the mainlanders? The administration says that it is a new town for Hong Kong people, but after the approval of this plan, the government will continue with the integration between Hong Kong and Shenzhen. If the administration is not able to be frank with us and if the administration is not able to tell us whether it's really a new town for people of Hong Kong, there is no reason for us to support the proposal. Next, is the Federation of Vegetable Marketing Cooperative Societies Limited, Ms. Qiu, the executive manager. Mr. Chairman, government officials, ladies and gentlemen, we have twenty-six cooperative societies under the Federation. The majority of members are farmers. They are living in the new territories. We have no objection to development, but we are a farmer organization and we are concerned about the use of farmland. Because of the following reasons, we hope that farmland will not be reduced because of development. The amount of vegetable import from China accounted for ninety-five percent of our market share and locally produced vegetables account for about four to five percent. And there are small and medium-sized... Two thousand small and medium-sized vegetable farms in Hong Kong. Our market is completely under the control of the mainland supply and we are also affected by factors in southern China such as typhoon, pest and other climatic conditions in southern China. With the economic development in the mainland, there is a greater demand for agricultural produce in the mainland and this has impact on our agricultural... On our agricultural markets in Hong Kong. We are therefore in a very passive situation. The mainland introduces a number of favorable measures attracting investment in farmland in the mainland. Yet in Hong Kong, our government does not have any long-term plan for farming or for agriculture. And supply of agricultural produce is very closely related to people's living and is also very important to governance. No country in the world wants to see rising food prices and people's grievances. We want to see that there can be continuous and sustainable agricultural development in Hong Kong. Thank you. Next is Mr. Tom Che Kit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. I oppose the scheme on behalf of my parents, who have been living in Singping, Vichy for more than sixty years. In fact, we feel very emotional about the proposal. You have never asked us and you're going to resume our land, take away our land. Is it good for the people? Let us don't talk about how the scheme is drawn up behind closed doors or who will be benefited by the development and whether there is adequate consultation. My parents will not move away from the village. We have been there for four generations. We'll continue to live there. Thus, the administration have the right to take away our property? We don't want to live in high-rise buildings. We want to live in sheds and in wooden huts. Is it because we are poor, we are old and you can drive us away at your own wish? Where is tolerance? Where is tolerance? What's the purpose of development? Is it for people to have a happy home? Or is it just for the fame of government officials? Now, you're just using public housing as an excuse to oppress us. You increase the density of public housing, and you are just going to reduce the living space of the public housing tenants. Is it good for them? Now, in the past two years, there have been serious problems in Sing Ping, Sing Ping, June. The government oppressing the residents, the indigenous villagers oppress the residents. An elderly gentleman, nearly a hundred years old, has been living on land for have been farming there for over forty years. The administration is going, the administration set up a number of envelope of mailboxes and then pour concrete on the farmland. And the old gentleman cannot farm on the land anymore. And Sing Ping School is not, has been converted for organic farming. And now, organic farming is no longer allowed over there. The administration is going to erode the village community. Next, Ms. Chen Siopin. Ladies and gentlemen, I represent the villages of Sing Ping, June, in Pingche, Takuling. We oppose zoning the area as a special industrial zone. That's really absurd and outrageous. I say it is absurd and outrageous because of the following reasons. It's called a special industrial region, high-value-added industrial area, including certification, innovation, technology, culture, industry, or environmental industry. Do you know what it is, what the government is saying? The so-called special industry is different thing when it is announced by the Planning Department. It's an industry that may affect the environment. And Mr. Paul Chan said that they belong to the six major industries with advantages. The administration doesn't have any clear plan. And because of this ambiguous plan, people's home will be demolished. And the administration only says that it's to provide land for housing. But the administration has not explained why it is used for special industries. What kind of industry will be put there? Why they take a hole in the middle of the houses? And then they're going to put in special industries. And there is also a central park, but for what purpose? And they have not explained why they're going to provide any job opportunities. Who will go to this remote area to work? Even if public housing is to be built in Kootong, you have to drive half an hour to this place. And if you are to take public transport, you will have to travel for an hour in order to go to this area. And what kind of jobs will be provided? Who will work there because, who will work in this remote area? Why you give up this quality farmland? Why you give up this farmland which can be used for eco-farming and eco-tourism for local people during the weekends? This is the backyard of people of Hong Kong. Why you damage it like this? I find this scheme absurd. I speak for the people of Hong Kong to fight for this backyard. I'm not just fighting for my own interests or those who live there. Thank you. Thank you. Next, Mr. Jang Gawa. I oppose the anti-eas N D A. The selection of the location is problematic. Now, from stage one engagement to stage three engagement, you spend a lot of time of consultation and then study and then alteration, many rounds. And still, there are many things that are ambiguous. The so-called six major industries which will be put there. On the twenty-second of September, Paul Chan was asked what kind of industries would be put there in the special industry, in special industrial zone. I think he just answered lightly and said that six major industries with advantages. Did he know what are those six major industries? They are medicine, medical service, education, culture industry, innovation, technology, certification, testing. These six major industries will be put in renovated industrial buildings, which have not been fully utilized. He, Donald Jiang didn't say that it would be put in special industrial zone in Pingche, Takuling. With the change of the C E, there is no continuity of policy. How can the government behave like this? How can the government behave like this? If you are to develop industries with major disadvantages, we've already got them. They are, they enjoy advantages. Why should you drive away the farming over there? In fact, farming over there is having a good advantage, is having advantage. And the development will only be completed in twenty thirteen. After eighteen years, the world will have been changed. After eighteen years, will these industries enjoy any advantage at all? The administration is just, the government has been causing a lot of suffering to the people of Hong Kong. The Science Park, the Cyberport is a waste. And now, you're going to cause problem to Pingche. We really cannot afford it. Why, time again, you cause us to suffer? Whether you have conscience or not, whether you have knowledge or not, just use your brains. Should we pay such a heavy cost for putting in and then putting in a lot of money, which we don't know what it is? We really don't know what kind of special industrial zone it is. Next is Ms. Lee Wa Sim. The so-called anti-northeast development is for the capitalists, for the financial consortium, and not for the people. The government just want to find excuses of developing industries into developing real estate. Look at the Cyberport, look at the Science Park. They claim high-value-added, high-technology industries. But finally, they've turned into luxurious residential developments. And only the residential and only the property developers get the profits. It doesn't, it doesn't benefit the ordinary people. As for the anti-northeast N D A, if you look at the development of Sing Ping, June, they said that it will be developed into a special industrial zone. It will be for low-density residential development. They are going to pull people over our eyes. They are going to cheat the people of Hong Kong. Look at the Tai Po Science Park, look at the Cyberport. They are just luxurious residential developments. They are for the benefits of the major developers. We are just driven away.
You have not considered the interests and feelings of people who live there. You also destroy the natural ecology there. I think this is wrong planning. You are misleading all people in Hong Kong. You say that this is going to be a new town for everybody. But I would just tell you, this is a new rich muscle for the developers. Apart from Takuling, Pingche, if you look at other areas, again, the emphasis is on property development. You have only looked at the interests of property developers. You mentioned other industries, but there is no clear description. They just give you a rough idea so you can imagine what you like to imagine about it. In fact, all affected people are driven away by private developers. They are driving out indigenous villages. We have been there for decades. And the development we have seen is that more and more we are persecuted by land developers. And the administration is putting our APIs to mislead Hong Kong people, saying that this is a new town, but in fact, this is the rich muscle for land developers. Please be not, do not be cheated by the administration. In fact, there is still land for the building of public housing or H O S, but it doesn't use it. Without proper research, the administration is saying that they need to use this piece of land. So I think it's unreasonable, and I object to it. Thank you. Next one, Ms. Lee Paul Hung. Good afternoon. I represent Sing Ping Village. I live around Takuling. My father and I have been living there for sixty-odd years. We build our lives around this area. But if we look at the planning blueprint, I think it is inhuman. You have not paid any attention to the living organisms and people there. You will see that they are trying to bulldoze the plan through our area. It is ridiculous. It is heavy-handed. You say this is going to be about integration, but no, it is not about integration. Lian Tang Boundary Crossing is just a few minutes away. How many more lies do you want to tell? How many villages have been living there for generations? Haven't your officials gone there to take a look in Takuling, Pingche? How many organic farms there are? In the year two thousand, the A F C D was nurturing these organic farmers. And ten years have passed. Now, you tell them that you are going to be evicted, that their farms would totally be destroyed, and they do not know where to put their roots again. Have you told them what their lives would become? They have put their life and property, their whole life savings, on the line in Pingche, Takuling. Have you thought about the prospect of these people? I really think that this is such a pity because people are having premier farming done on this piece of land. But you are telling them that this would be turned into a special industrial area. You say there will be, well, actually, there is a director of a home of the elderly. And he just got to know that the home would be surrounded by the industrial zone. And he was telling me, why is it that you did not even tell him about the plan? This is so ridiculous. When you seek to develop the land, what are you going to do about these old people? What about the air that they are going to breathe? You are just leaving three plots. And you say that there will be tourism development and only three institutions would be able to stay behind. You say there will be a green belt, but it is already a green area. They don't need more greenery added by you. You tell people that this is going to be a new town for Hong Kong people. However, there will be luxury flats only without H O S or P R H. And in fact, the plan has not been endorsed. However, you are already showing A P I's. You are misleading the public. You are turning Hong Kong people against the people who live there. Thank you. Next one, Ms. Lo Chi Feng. Chairman, members, officials, and friends. I live in Pingche, Sing Ping Village. I have not lived there for a long time, maybe just over a decade. My family have a good life there. The air there is very fresh, the environment is tranquil. And my family and I can enjoy unpolluted vegetables without pesticides. We thought that we could stay there till we leave this world. However, you say that there should be development, and you are pushing us towards our graves. You don't treat us as human beings. My family and our relatives are all very worried because we don't know what to do. I don't know where I can move to. Sorry. I'd like to say a few things why I object to the plan and ask for it to be withdrawn. First, this is the only green farm in Hong Kong, yet you are seeking to destroy it. You want to turn the entire Hong Kong into a concrete jungle, just like Japan. And there would not be any balance in terms of the ecology. Number two, please do not rob us of our rights and interests and the way of life we have been leading. You are sacrificing the interests of many people in Hong Kong just to satisfy a few land developers. Does that mean that there can be sustainable development in Hong Kong? This is against the overall development principle in Hong Kong. This is totally unreasonable for us who are not going to be able to benefit from it. Number three, the rural green ecology can also benefit urban dwellers who can find some reprieve on holidays because they can then visit this place to have their pressure relieved. I hope those who can really call the shots in the higher ranks of government, you are paid by taxpayers. You must be aware of the interests of people there. And please do not destroy thousands of families who live there. Please do not just look at the interests of a minority and build that on the pain and suffering of the majority. The development is not urgent. Please do not roll out the development to evict grassroots who live there. Please think again, think twice about this development. If you want to have development, there are other vacant sites. Look at the golf courses. So I'm going to defend my home. I'm not going to move away. I will not allow it to be demolished. Thank you. Next, Mr. Choi Yun Sing.
Good afternoon. I am a non-indigenous villager from Shan Kai Wat Lower Village. We are asking for no demolition, no removal. We don't want to live in high rises. We just like to have the status quo preserved so we can live and work happily. Those who are going to be affected, we don't even know the number. The administration has just given a ballpark figure. You know, there are so many of us there. If you turn around with ammunition on us, many will die. Indigenous villages and their villages will be preserved. They are going to benefit from the development plan. Their land will become more expensive as a result of the plan. However, in developing walled villages, we don't know the details. The law and order and fire safety will all become hidden worries. Since there are so many problems, the entire society will suffer from the pressure. Many rural sites in Hong Kong have been damaged. For example, by the use of storage for containers. As you know, the transportation industry is not a sunset industry at all. Have you thought about helping them? Very often, the container storage sites or parking sites are huge. And they are destroying the development. It has caused flooding and transport problems. Can you thought about rezoning such container storage sites? So you will not affect people who actually live in rural areas. When the administration seeks development, you only set eyes on
you only set eyes on the commercial side of things. What do you mean by high-value-added industries? You haven't let us know. If this plan is carried forward, would only low-level jobs be created? For example, public transportation workers and cleaning and security workers? And you're not going really to create high-value-added industries. I'd like you to learn from the great leap forward. Please do not go for signature buildings and plans and have no regard for sustainability. Thank you. Next one, Mr. Kwok Kin Chung. Chairman, I oppose this N E N T new town development plan. I have heard from so many speakers here that this is actually not a new town. Not many people can live there. Only ten percent of the land would be for P R H and then the rest is for low-density housing. Would they be inhabited by Hong Kong people? No. First of all, this is not accessible at all. You live in Timbuktu and even if you drive, you have to drive half an hour before you can enter a main road. And you need to take public transport for an hour before you can access the area. Even if you build new roads, if people want to access the urban area, they will have to travel far and this would actually amount to economic loss. Number two, many people have said that this administration is inhuman. It is an inhuman administration. P S, if accountability officials don't know, please talk to them. Don't just do whatever they tell you. The civil service should be defending Hong Kong's core values. If accountability officials can do whatever they want, say, for example, to go ahead with N E N T, somebody said that the consultation has been going on for long, but somebody just said that he learned only very recently that his home would be demolished. Come on, if consultation had been sufficient, then many people would have been bargaining with you for arrangements to be made. And if there is premium farmland, if there are monuments or wetland. All society now is talking about preservation and conservation, but this is not what you're going to do. You would get the land, you would remove everything on it and then just build high-rises on them. I think you are putting the cart before the horse. If you want to find land for building houses for Hong Kong people, there is land in Hong Kong. You don't have to remove everything on Hong Kong's backyard in order to put buildings there. We understand that there are three nine oh oh hectares of government land in Hong Kong and you can still have four hundred hectares, um, discounting land for village houses and roads, et cetera. And the four hundred hectares would be quite enough to build houses. And you can build three hundred and sixty thousand four hundred square foot flats. They can be private housing, they can be H O S or P R H. You can do your own distribution. But that is not what you are doing. You just want this piece of land and remove everything on it. And I don't think you have a reason to do it and this is not a plan for the present anyway. Thank you, Mr. Wong Chan Kean. Thank you. I am from Pingche Village. I'd like to share with you my feelings. I'd like to ask you, how do you distinguish between indigenous and non-indigenous villagers? I am thirty-seven. This year, I was born in Pingche. Am I indigenous or non-indigenous? Is it that if I cannot build a new territory's, um, small house, I'm not indigenous? Do you view us as human beings? In this plan, indigenous villagers are not included, but in your first and second public engagement exercise, you only talk to indigenous villagers but not us. Have you ever treated us as human beings? Two days ago, I heard this. The administration actually tried to inform us, but they posted documents in North Point. I think you are quite a good administration. Why don't you post documents in the U S? So when I travel to the U S for a holiday, I would see such notices and then I would know that my home would be resumed. You are officials and, in fact, we had wanted to invite Mr. Paul Chen, the Secretary for Development, to come and take a look of Pingche. And our alliance was trying to invite Mr. Paul Chen to come, but he replied to say that he had been busy with official duties. And so never mind. This is a hard-earned opportunity, so we traveled far to come here to see him, but he's not here. Is it that government officials or secretaries only want to listen to voices that support them and they cannot accept anyone who objects to them? Is it that whenever there are voices of objection, officials would go away? C Y Leung and his team said that he would love to listen to residents on the ground, but we have been inviting many secretaries to listen to us, but no one ever paid us any attention. Have we been treated as human beings? You are still resorting to sophistry and linguistic dishonesty. What are you doing? You are putting up this brainwashing A P I, but you cannot even answer questions on this plan. You say this is a new town for Hong Kong people. I'm a Hong Kong person, but have you looked at my interests? You say Hong Kong people need land, but if you remove us and evict us from our land, then you are creating people who are not housed in Hong Kong. Have you thought about us? You have put up these A P Is and so we have been the objects of attack. People say, why don't you go? We want houses built there. But the new housing would be so, um, expensive. Have you looked at the building outside Taipu Science Park? It was fetching a hundred and sixty million dollar for a flat. Next one, Ms. Chiu Yin Yu. I'm from Takuling Pingyang Sin or New Village. I object to the plan because this is not going to be a new town for Hong Kong people. It only destroys farmland, it destroys nature, it destroys the ecology. The administration has paid no regard for farming and nature and you are encouraging developers to make use of farmland as container storage. Hong Kong is losing its rural area. The rural area here has a history of seventy to eighty years. We have a rural life there, we have farmland there. This is what nature can give us. I don't want the next generation of Hong Kong people not to be able to enjoy watercress grown in our own N T. Without farmland, you cannot call anywhere a rural area and Hong Kong people should be free to choose their way of life. You should not dictate where we live. Don't just house us in concrete P R H or H O S. We should have our own choice. You say go and we are driven out. Without consultation, you are moving us out. You are moving out the poor. So the rich and famous and powerful can live here. This is an unjust plan. That's all. Thank you. Next one, Mr. Lee Man Kit. Good afternoon. Um, my family and I and neighbors have been there for sixty to seventy years. We have lived happily for generations. We have not asked the administration to do anything for us. We have been self-sufficient for a few generations and now you resume our home for development. You are going to build luxury flats and the impractical special industries. Do we need them? Does Hong Kong need them? I want to ask officials, have Hong Kong people agreed with you on this N E N T plan? I represent all Pingche residents who are affected and tell you that there should be no removal, no demolition. We will not talk to you about compensation. Stop the misleading A P I. You're misleading Hong Kong people. You unscrupulous officials. You met with the village representative and indigenous villagers in secret and you do not pay any attention to non-indigenous villagers. Don't treat us as Choi Yun Village. We are not as easy to be bullied. We have a lot of people, we have thousands of cats and dogs. Next, Mr. Yun Man Ho, Mr. Chris Yun. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the N D As in N T North East. On the face of it, you think it's a new town development, but it's a transfer of benefits, collusion between the business and the officials and also it's a matter of integrating Shenzhen and Hong Kong. Well, instead, in the public engagement, uh, exercise number three, it is said that this is going to be an integration between Hong Kong and the Pearl River Delta region. There will be a lot of shopping malls for the individual visit schemes. There will be medical and education services and there will be low-density housing for them. So it's more for the mainlanders than Hong Kong. In fact, C Y Leung in twenty twelve in, um, an interview to a mainland newspaper as well as interview to Oriental Daily, he's saying that he will have a special region within the special region. So mainlanders will come to the special region of the S A R and they do need to have a visa. In other words, we are moving the boundary of Shenzhen South West, so it is selling out of Hong Kong. In nineteen ninety-eight, there was the proposal to develop N T North East. Since then, the developers have been buying up land, resuming land in N T North East. If we are to realize this project, we have to spend forty billion dollars to buy back the land from the developers. So it is clear that it's a matter of collusion between the business and the government and it's a transfer of benefit. The, um, Secretary Train Niro of the C C P in Hong Kong, the C Y Leung, has said that there's no need to withdraw the plan. It shows that he is very stubborn. Yesterday, at the F C meeting, they resorted to a very crooked means to impose, um, the, um, O A H allowance, living allowance on us. So if he likes it, he will bypass the Legco. Legco will become an administrative tool of his administration. So we need to rise up and we have to join the New Year's Day rally against C Y Leung, say no to C Y Leung, say no to the communist, um, members in Hong Kong. Next, Ms. Max Chou Ching. Mr. Chairman, I'm a executive committee member of the Taipu Service Center. I want to tell those in Hong Kong who are not interested in politics that we don't come here for fun. We want to come here to tell you that since C Y Leung has taken office with six hundred and eighty-nine votes, we are seeing all sorts of regression in terms of our developments. Yesterday, at the F C meeting, they resorted to a very unpleasant tactic to force through the O A L A. And even the civil servants who used to be law-abiding have disappeared, including those who are present today. Now, we see a C G who doesn't do anything in substance and he's leading, um, a team of school police officials and he wants to have his way. So what we see here is that we have everything which is outrageous. We are having toxic attitudes with values. So for C Y Leung's administration, I think the administration is best at, um, turning everything upside down. What is tragic is that for lawmakers, they're supposed to monitor the government on our behalf, but then the legislature has been monopolized by the pro-establishment camp. And of course, what is regrettable is that the Democrats did not even impeach the C G for the N T North East to be turned into a new town. I think again, it is clearly, it is but a little lie. To read the government's papers, you see very clearly that it is a matter of integration of Hong Kong-Shenzhen. Um, the number of Hong Kong people there will be reduced, the ratio will drop and then it's easier to plunge the votes. How come that all of a sudden it has become a project to solve the housing problem, Hong Kong? In July twenty ten, a paper was submitted to Legco. In fact, we were supposed to have two thousand two hundred hectares of land which is vacant. In Yunnan and Shaantin, we have a lot of them, seven hundred thirty and five hundred fifty hectares respectively. I want to know why the government is not going to turn such vacant government land into land for private housing. Why, on the contrary, you are going to spend a lot of money to resume land, agricultural land from the property developers in N T North East? All along, as a Hong Kong citizen, I've been very proud of being a Hong Kong citizen. Before the handover, as long as you worked hard, you got a job, you made your living and I respected the civil servants. Nowadays, this is no longer the case. We have been returned to China for fifteen years. On the face of it, we have prosperity, but in fact, the wealth gap is getting more and more serious. Prices are soaring and in N T North East, you are going to drive away the poorer citizens. So on the first of January, please come out and we have to join the rally against C Y. Uh, we have to, um, bring down C Y and we have to bring down the communist administration. Uh, next, Ms. Lee Choi Pha. Uh, take your time. I'm very nervous. I think you want to resolve the housing problem of Hong Kong. We all want to have a roof over our heads. Today, there is this proposal to have domination so as to have the N T North East development. For many years, I don't think we should do anything at expense of the interests of the villagers and you are causing everybody jittery. For many years, villagers have spent lots of efforts on building a home for themselves. Today, the government make a statement and then say that for Ku Tong Village, our home sweet home will be bulldozed. So you're taking away our homes, taking away our dedicated efforts. You are destroying our homes. So for the current administration, I just wonder whether it is for the good of the citizens or whether for its own sake. I believe that the citizens won't find it acceptable. I don't want to move. I want to stay. I've been there for decades. I don't want to move to any other places. I want to ask whether the administration think that there aren't not enough poor people? Um, does the administration want us to become even poorer? Do they want us to be sweet sleepers, sleeping under the fly overs? I'm not looking for compensation. I don't want any compensation at all. Thank you. Next, um, Ms. Lam Kun Bu in the second row. I'm from Ku Tong Village, surname Lam. I haven't been speaking in public before. Allow me to say this from the outset. I am absolutely against the N T North East development proposal. My grandparents and my parents have lived in Ku Tong for a long time. Myself and my son have also been living there for a long time. So altogether, four generations have been there for seventy years. And my grandmother used to have a metal workshop and a piece of farmland to grow vegetables and chicken, um, before. Um, her shop was resumed and my parents also raised animals, but therefore, environmental sake, it has been closed. The six siblings among myself were born in Ku Tong. All along, we have been engaging farming animals. We have a very close bond among family members. We always have family dinners and reunion and family barbecues whenever we have a festival. Even after my marriage, um, I returned to Ku Tong after staying away for seven days in the urban area. I couldn't stand the pollution, I couldn't stand the noise. And my husband allowed me to go back to Ku Tong to live and my son was also born in Ku Tong. And my son is already twenty years old now. For Ku Tong villages, we are very helpful, we help each other. I remember that thirty years ago, my elder brother and, um, he asked me to look after his son. I was looking for him everywhere. I was anxious. And then, um, in fact, um, a neighbor got hold of the lost child and returned the lost child to me. I was really overjoyed. You couldn't see it in the urban setting, but in the villages, neighbors would help each other out. Uh, will this be kept? Will this last? There are many other stories of mutual help. There are endless such stories. So I'm against the barbaric act of the government to demolish our houses and resume our land. So I'm strongly against the N T North East development. So I'm strongly against the Antinorm East development proposal. Thank you. Next, Mister So Yat Tong. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Officials, lawmakers, I also live in Kutong Village. I want to say that for today's public hearing, we have the village representative, who is the if speaker in this morning's session. Have he been making the statement in his personal capacity? Then we should respect his freedom of speech. But then, Mister Lam should not be saying anything on our behalf. But this morning, Mister Lam Shufu made a speech on behalf of Kutong North Village. He spoke in the capacity of Kutong North Village representative. In fact, we had a referendum among the villagers at Kutong. Now, at this public hearing, I want to testify. What Mister Lam said this morning did not represent the conclusion of Kutong North Village. This is very disappointing. This is most regrettable. I just want to say this once again. I want to tell you what the villagers have concluded. In 2009, on the 30th of January, in fact, Kutong villages unanimously said that there shouldn't be any removal, any demolition. The Kutong North and Kutong South Village heads were witnesses. And then the second voting took place on the 14th of October 2012. Only Kutong South Village head was present. Kutong South Village representative tried to come into contact with Mister Lam Shufu, but he said that he would not attend the voting. Now, we have already put it on record. And if anybody would like to represent our views, then it must be that no demolition, no removal, no need for the Antinorm East. So please do not get any distorted conclusion from our village. Lastly, myself, and I speak on behalf of other villagers, that is, I want the government to shelve the Antinorm East development. Next, Ms. Yun Cheng Man. Thank you. I'm from Kutong. I'm against the Antinorm East development. Well, this morning, the 27th, 28th, and 29th representatives, they were the Society of Friends, Kutong Residents' Livelihood Association. They had written submissions as well, and they spoke as representatives of individual organizations. We are supposed to respect their freedom of speech. But then, since they had the word "Kutong" in the title of the organization, it is not that they might not do so, but then this may give rise to misunderstanding. In fact, such groups do not represent the views of the Kutong villagers. Therefore, I want to take this opportunity to say that for Kutong villages, we had had two village meetings. On the first occasion, 31st of January 2009, we unanimously approved that there shouldn't be any removal or demolition. The North Village and the South Village heads were present, including Mister Lam Shufu. And then on the 14th of October 2012, we again affirmed the conclusion. Only Mister Zhang from the South Village was present. The two conclusions were included in our permanent records. So I just want to say that from now on, for those who are interested, for those groups who are, that are interested, if they would like to indicate their position, please bear in mind that we don't need the Antinorm East project. We don't want to be removed. We don't want to have our houses demolished. Please do not distort our views. Please do not claim that they represent the views of Kutong villages. Therefore, lastly, I just want to say that Kutong villages would like the government to shelve the project and withdraw the project. Next, Mister An Fei Ming. Thank you. I'm from Kutong Village. Now, everybody is talking about Antinorm East. We've got many elders. We've been living here for generations. I'm the fourth generation. We were born in Kutong. We grew up in Kuntong. And my daughter is also growing up. In fact, for each site, for each house, it was built by us with our own hands, with our own efforts. Well, we asserted a lot of efforts to build our own homes. All along, the government has failed to consult us. They haven't take our views into consideration. They simply tell us that our homes were bulldozed. The government doesn't care for us. But in fact, do you understand the laboriness in our village? Even if you rehouse us, it would be meaningless because all the love, all the care will be lost forever. Therefore, I hope that the government would allow us to stay there so that we can continue to live there. We want to stay there. We want to grow up there. Our children grow up there, and we even want to pass our last days there, generations after generations. So please return the land to us. Thank you. Next, Ms. Li Yin Feng. I'm from Kutong Village. Good afternoon. My family has been there for decades. We've been there for generations. We've never thought about going to public housing or getting any compensation. We've been there for a long time. We've never been on any government subsidies. We have been leading a very quiet life. But then, for the Antinorm East proposal, we are going to demolish our homes. I just don't want you to demolish our houses. All I want is no removal, no demolition. And for the Antinorm East project, yes, you deconsult Hung Yi Ko and Kutong Village. You simply asked them, but why didn't you ask us, who actually live there? Because you're going to demolish our houses, and we don't know where to go. But our main point is no removal, no demolition. So how are you going to help us? Thank you. Next, Ms. Chow Ka He. Good afternoon. I'm not from Antinorm East. I'm just an ordinary Hong Kong citizen. I speak in such a capacity. I'm against Antinorm East. It should be shelved immediately. This is my position. I understand that many citizens were very emotional when they spoke. They would like to speak, they would like to say a lot. I'm also very emotional. It is something normal because we have a clear conscience. This is an integration of Hong Kong and Shenzhen. You say that this is a new town. That you say that Hong Kong lacks land. We don't have sufficient land. Is it really so? We have got 4,000 hectares of vacant land, 1,200 belonging to the government. You want to have 100 hectares of land for housing, only 20% for public housing, and then the rest will be luxury homes. You say that this is new town? Now, 4,000 hectares of land are left vacant. You are going to remove 10,000 people. What has it got to do with Antinorm East? It is not going to be called N T N E, New Town. It is clear that it is an integration between Hong Kong-Shenzhen. In your consultation document, you did say that you promote it as an economic project. It's not new town. It's not social development. Mrs. Carrie Lam, from the outset, said that with population slowing down, Hong Kong no longer needs new town. We only need new development areas. N D A is not a new town. This is quite clear. Now, you try to have cross-boundary infrastructure to replace local infrastructure. You have Lian Tang, B C P nearby. This is to link with Ping Chee. In other words, this is the N D A between Hong Kong and Shenzhen. And I've just heard what the New People's Party have said. Because this project is to release the land from the frontier closed area. So what is the point behind the New People's Party? Why are you trying to adopt a low profile? Many people don't know that their homes are going to be destroyed. Is it democracy? And then, just now, many people have talked about using the site of the golf course. It is said that it will take a long time, but then it's a problem with the government. You're not democratic. You always impose something from top down. You planned everything, and then you want to impose it on us. Like the integration between Hong Kong and Shenzhen, you have no longer, you no longer talk about this. And Professor Law Shukai also talked about integration between Hong Kong and Shenzhen. So you're lying. So if you don't agree, does it mean that Professor Law Shukai framing you up? Why are you telling lies? You're not being reasonable. And lastly, just now, an old lady said that you're supposed to help the citizens. You act like parents.
Um,根据请下一位 请李宝芝小姐那边 Ms. Li Bo Zhi. Good afternoon, Mister Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Now, many say that this is an integration between Hong Kong and Shenzhen. I don't know whether the administration is going to respond to that or after they've said that, they try to hide behind all the excuses and just change the name tag and just call it a program to provide housing with people of Hong Kong. It's just a new town with people of Hong Kong. Whatever name you call it, whatever tactic you employ to hide it, it is just a property development project. The government is just facing grievances, and there is no way out. The administration is just trying to build and build and build and try to create building jobs, construction jobs. And people have jobs. They don't just, they don't put the blame on the government. So our economy is just dependent upon property development, and the property developers, called the shorts. The government is responsible. Property prices are high. People are not able to afford their homes. This is the result of government policy. The government just condone the hegemony of property developers, all policies favor property developers. That's the result of government policy. Now, people are angry about it. People have very strong grievances. And people, you take away the land of people. The government's land policy is wrong. And the government has not rectified its mistakes. Land use is not just an issue of 20 or 30 years. It is a policy for a century. The administration cannot just try to evade people's grievances and try to build more public housing, create more construction jobs. And then, if people is just so simple-minded, then it's easy to be officials. Now, there is, in fact, this is a scheme for the property developers. It's for the integration of Hong Kong and the mainland. People in the mainland know it, but you just deny it. You just deny it blatantly. You're just lying. If you don't develop the Northeast New Territories, there are still, there is still a lot of land in Hong Kong for development. And why you rely on property development? There are vacant industrial buildings. There are vacant village schools. There is a lot of land for development. You don't need to develop Northeast New Territories. You should shelve the whole program. It's not beneficial to Hong Kong. As for the, as for the groups and individuals who have been scheduled to speak in this session, have completed their presentation, before I ask members to ask their questions, I hope that those who have spoken today will put down, and if they have any written submission, please put down their names on their submissions so that we know who you are and we know what your views are. Now, the floor is open to members. I suggest that each member will be given three minutes, questions and answers included. So please be brief and precise when you ask your questions. Ms. Chan Yuen Ha. Thank you. I thank the individuals and groups for coming so that we have a more comprehensive understanding of public opinion with regard to Antinorm East. As some said, that those who spoke in the morning, they didn't represent you. We know the view of the villagers now. This morning, there is the issue of volcanic development, i.e., original economic activities should be maintained instead of building another Changguanou in Antinorm East. That's the position of the F T U. This is just like what we have proposed in Kowloon East, though some policies adopted by, policies adopted by the administration are not happy with us. I want to ask the Conservancy Association, Ms. Yan, and also my other friends. This morning, I asked the Permanent Secretary on the farmland. My suggestion is that the farmland that are being tilled shouldn't be taken away. And there is also quality farmland in the Northeast New Territories. I'm not a farmer, but I have contacts with farmers in the Northeast, and they have put emphasis on the point that quality farmland should not be damaged. And it's very difficult to recover or to make quality farmland. I have been to Long Valley, and people say that, correct me if I'm wrong, the conserve area, 37 hectares. But in fact, there are quite, there is quite a lot of quality farmland in Long Valley. If there is such a farming or agricultural policy, what is the policy of the administration? Now, the villagers say that they have been living there for several generations, and they have been tilling the land for many, many years. And where can they make a living if they are driven away? A villager told me that he has been suffering from pressure. He is asked to leave. Please, please give some time to the Permanent Secretary. Please speak on farming, on farming. I only have got 10 seconds. According to our third phase of public engagement, as for regular farmland, only 22 hectares will be affected. Yes, please go on. As for the core area of Long Valley in the third engagement exercise, it will be turned into a natural eco park, 27 hectares, and there are 45 hectares together with Futaiou, 9 hectares altogether. 91 hectares can be used for farming. And we have liaised with the A F C D, and they've also information of fellow farmland. And we'll try to enable the farmers who are affected in the area to continue farming in these areas. I hope the Permanent Secretary can give us more information. How much land has been earmarked for farming and how much land for building? Ms. Emily Lau. Thank you, Chairman, and I think the individuals and groups for coming and provide information to us. I'm interested in Kutong Village. Now, several of them are villagers of Kutong, and they know, they have noticed the speeches of some people in the first session. If you don't come, we would have thought that they were your representatives. Now, you have come, and you pointed out the names, you pointed out the organizations. Doesn't mean that you know, you knew beforehand that they would come and they would say something which didn't represent you, and you tried certain means to stop them or you tried to rectify what they say? You tried to rectify what they said? So somebody, or is it true that somebody has just taken... So um, somebody or is it true that somebody has just taken up, have somebody just do some name dropping and then they will, they say something on your behalf? Ms. Lee, is it Ms. Lee? Let me answer your question. Now, since there was the proposal of anti-Northeast development, Ku Tong was in a confusion, is in a confusion. A certain faction supports the scheme, but the majority of the villagers want to remain and continue their existing lifestyle. They asked for a referendum and during the consultation period in December two thousand and nine, oh rather, the thirty-first of January two thousand and nine, there was a referendum. Mr. Yu Weng-wa and Mr. Lam Siu-fu, who were village heads, were present. Number eight. After the referendum, we came to a conclusion, no resettlement, no demolition, protection of our village at all cost. As a village head, shouldn't he tell you this? If he say anything more than that, I believe it's all nonsense or misleading and doesn't represent to Ku Tong Village. How do we know that? We contacted them many times, we tried to persuade them many times before, urged them to follow the wish of the people, the villagers. But it's a pity, I listened into that this morning, it didn't say no resettlement, no demolition. I hope the Permanent Secretary take note of this and please not be misled by that. If you make any proposal upon their prompting, then it will cause even greater trouble. Ms. Albert Chen. Um, may space on the consultation. This, I in fact, many, today, many villagers come to criticize the inadequate consultation. I hope the Permanent Secretary can clarify this. Now, if in the last term, the Liang Tang, there was compensation for Liang Tang and Heng Yun-wai. And was it related to Ku Tong? And if the administration just ran through the proposal and um, is it related to the compensation to Liang Tang and Heng Yun-wai project? And is it related to Ku Tong? And how is the administration going to proceed with the consultation with the present program? With regard to public engagement, I'm listening to the views of different parties. So you can rest assured that we are not just listening to the views we have received. Um, we've heard the views today and will continue to consider the views seriously. With regard to the Liang Tang project, the funding was only for the Liang Tang project. As for the N D A, we are reviewing the policy on the N D A. We hope that the review will be completed next year. Ms. Albert Chen, any follow-up? Concerning consultation, there are many residents in Ku Tong. Some of the residents asked for a referendum on the future development Ku Tong. And there are many residents in Ku Tong who insist on the policy of no demolition, no resettlement. How is the administration going to address that? Now, we've heard the views and we are considering them. I've said that we hope that in the first half of twenty thirteen, we can come up with a report. And if the administration is going to adjust the plan, we hope to come up with details. As for communicating with the residents affected, we'll step up such communication. According to my experience with regard to development in new territories, consultation with indigenous villagers is done one hundred and ten percent. And if the village, indigenous villagers did not agree, then the administration would not go ahead. But for non-indigenous villagers, the administration claimed that they would listen, but usually the objections of non-indigenous villagers were brushed aside. Same for Cha Yun Village is an example. And it's very likely that Ku Tong will repeat the same fate of Cha Yun-Chun. Will the administration um, rectify the situation? And will the administration not discriminate against the non-indigenous villages? Mr. Gary Fan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I've been here since nine A M. And I thank the groups and individuals who have come to speak to us. I don't know how does the Permanent Secretary, Permanent Secretary feel? Some criticize the administration vehemently, some are crying, they are not begging the administration. They just have a strong emotional tie to their land and their family. Now, the Secretary says that he will listen to the views, he will consider the views. But there's a very, very important point here. With regard to the development of anti-Northeast, some will have to sacrifice. And according to my understanding, those who ask for no resettlement, those who ask for no demolition, those who ask for keeping the farmland will not be entertained. Even if the administration has heard their views, nothing can be done. I want to ask the Secretary whether my understanding is correct. If this is incorrect, if there is still room for adjustment, then how can you respond to those who ask for keeping their lifestyle in situ? They continue to live in their own homes, till their own land, can anything be done?
Well, I have never said there will be sacrifice. We will just, I have said that we cannot meet the demand of each and every person. We have heard the views and we'll try our best to minimize the impact. We'll try to provide the best compensation and resettlement. This morning, the Permanent Secretary said that somebody's rights would be affected and that would be unavoidable. So your answer is no. You just maintain that through compensation and resettlement, you will deal with such demands instead of responding to the no resettlement, no demolition position. Now, if we are to meet, meet the demand of each and every person, it will be a very difficult order. So would it be possible? It is, it will be very difficult, I'm not talking about everything. I'm talking about Ku Tong and other three areas that demand in this scheme. Is it possible? Now, in the report, which will be published before the end of June twenty thirteen, will provide a detailed answer. Next, Mr. Fernando Cheng.
Thank you Chairman and thank you um, to the deputations and individuals. We've heard you, we know your feelings, it's about your life, it's about your lifestyle and it's also about the lives of several generations. And they are under the threat of the anti-Northeast development. Your homes will be demolished and your villages and your villagers will be eradicated. And some village representatives do not reflect the views of the villagers. The administration is just following the normal consultation channel of the rural committees and the district councils. And the views of non-indigenous villagers have been ignored. The Permanent Secretary has been here and his answer is just airtight.
You can see that he said a lot of things, but it amounted to nothing. We provide a platform here for you to speak out. And more than that, we want the platform to facilitate communication. I have been listening to the P S. But it seems he is refusing to register his stance, he's still saying that he's listening to views and that later on there will be a reply. And in a previous session, he said that before June next year, there will be a more concrete option provided. My question is, before June, will you be happy to face the residents again? Apart from coming here to suffer a few hours today and next week. And we are talking about generations of people who live in the area concerned and that their homeland is going to be totally destroyed. Now, of course, you have announced such a plan for over a decade and they have been harassed for over a decade in different ways. The indigenous villagers, the landowners and developers have been harassing them. And in fact, indigenous and non-indigenous villagers have been living together for long, but now a wedge has been driven between them. I'd like to know what assistance you can give them in the interim. With regard to the destruction of their farmland and other facilities, what are you going to do for them? P S, today, the message is very clear. Members and deputations are saying that bureaus and departments should step up communication with them. I will certainly do a better job when I go back, thank you. Ms. Alice Mack.
Chairman, I'd like to follow up on Ms. Chen Yuen-han's question. P S, if villagers would like to stay there in their own village to live and farm, what options or plans do you have? And also, it is very strange, it seems maybe you have made the arrangements so that what we have this morning is quite different from what we have heard in the afternoon. I don't know whether this is a coincidence or it was deliberate so the two groups did not, would not be fighting against each other. However, the views are really quite polarized. What can you do about such views? And also, just now, a deputation said something and I think the administration should clarify. Because all this morning and afternoon, people have said that you have not done adequate consultation. And still now, many people are unhappy with the plan, but it seems the administration is not paying attention. However, a deputation has said that the so-called consultation is that you posted a notice up in North Point, you did not actually consult villagers on the ground. P S, can you tell us whether that was really the case? If you only posted a notice in North Point and you take it that you have consulted the villagers in Pingche, then I would agree with the deputation that you should have told them to go to the U S. Ms. Mack, there has not been any deliberate arrangement. We just arranged the deputations according to the order, they registered their interest. P S, in the N D A, there will be about ninety-one hectares for farming. The A F C D is also looking for other farmland for interested farmers to continue with their farmer, farming. In zoned agricultural land, we have about three thousand two hundred and eighty hectares. And the A F C D information is showing that out of three two eight zero, about seven hundred and thirty-nine hectares have been used. In other words, there is still farmland that can be located for farmers. As for consultation, as we said in the paper in P E one and two, we consulted the relevant organizations and we also organized seminars, briefings and forums. And as you know, we also organized forums where thousands of people attended. We did not just put up a notice. Ms. Mack, my question is, um, P S, did you really post a notice in North Point? Now, if they just did not attend the forums, now, you know, you know why you organized that consultation forum for a few thousand people. You were a little forced to do it, but did you really post a notice in North Point and regarded it as consultation? Of course, that was not the case, I defer to my colleague. In all three stages of public engagement, we made use of different channels to contact the public. We did so on newspapers, we did it online, we posted notices, we also sent out letters to disseminate the information. And we also invited the public to give their views through the same channels. Next member, K K Feng, thank you Chairman.
In these few years, more and more Hong Kong people are engaging in farming work. In fact, in the six industries with a distinguished advantage, um, you also said something like that. I'd like to know whether you really treat farming as a green policy? Are, are you just trying to drive the farmers away? P S, are you talking about the industry, member? Or are you talking about the design of the N D A? I'm asking you whether your green policy would include farming? Because I cannot see any farming policy. On the contrary, you are resuming farmland and you are driving farmers away. So are you going in the opposite direction? P S, well, the farming policy is not under the jurisdiction of the Development Panel Bureau. But if you look at a territory-wide farming policy, it belongs to the F H Bureau. Under that policy, they will provide infrastructure and low-interest loans. Is this what Mr. Feng is asking for? Is it that within the administration, there will be such a farming policy? Do you know about it? Because you are resuming anti-land, you did so in Cha Yun-Chun and now you are resuming land in N E N T. You are strangling them, you are not allowing them to develop further.
I can't agree with this view because in the N D A, there will still be ninety-one hectares of farmland. I still have a second question about integration between the mainland and Hong Kong. C Y Leng wrote in an article and Lao Shukai also said this. In the N E N T, is there going to be integration between mainland and Hong Kong? Or did it happen before and now it is no longer the case? Or is it that it is no longer the case before because you have not talked about it? Well, actually, in P E one, in November two oh eight, we got this view. And that is the strategic role of the N D A. A member of the public said that when we planned for the N D A, we should know. I'm asking for the administration's view. I'm telling you why we have come to this stage. Please allow the P S to continue, please do not talk among yourselves. Now, I'd like to go through you Chairman, that I'm asking for the administration's view because he is not telling me what I want to know. No, I think I'm answering your question. The view was that that we should be aware of the long-term development of P L D in which Hong Kong is a part. And that is why when we made our proposal for N E N T, apart from the land policy, we are aware of the advantageous position of this area, which is next to the boundary. We think that we should provide land for industrial development in Hong Kong so Hong Kong will be more competitive. You did not answer my question, I was talking about integration between mainland and Hong Kong. Ms. Sit Ho.
Thank you Chairman. The official said that the information would be uploaded online, there would be the posting up of posters and there would be press A P I's in order to inform villages. But today, you can see that many villages are here to tell us that they do not or did not know about the public engagement exercises. They might not have the chance to read a consultation document and you can't say that you place the information online and you take it that villagers have been informed. That is not practical. There are district officers in every district. I'm sure district officers in the N T know very well the style of living in villages. If you have your heart in consulting them, especially those whose houses would be pulled down by you, you should do so in a person-to-person approach instead of having these people know only when it is almost too late. My question is, the villagers can do a referendum themselves. They can have direct democracy involving everybody in a village. They can have direct democracy involving everybody in a village. Why is it that you can't do it? You might not have done so in the past. Well, that is water under the bridge, but you must catch up with what you have not been able to do. If there is redevelopment in the urban area, the URA will make use of our fund to engage a team of social workers to help people concerned, to let them know the essential information and their rights. In the past, the URA social work teams would advise people to move out. But now there is independent checking and they have become more independent. They would organize villages in order to fight their own rights, fight for their own rights, including no removal, no demolition. P S, this is done for the urban area. Now in the rural area, you are thinking of removing a village. Shouldn't you set aside some public money to set up a team of independent social workers in order to help villagers defend their rights? Or else you only rely on Mr. Chu Hoi Tikk and they have to deal with the entire new territories. How do you think Mr. Chu is going to be able to do it? Can you promise it? And also to set up a team of social workers to organize villages to help fight for their rights? Chairman, Deputations order, please. Please do not disrupt the meeting. P S, Chairman, our colleagues will step up communication directly with stakeholders. Chairman, do you mean state, uh, social workers? Your colleagues are only going to advise people to accept your resumption by accepting compensation and move out. But social workers will help organize villages to fight for their own rights. P S, would you consider what the member is saying? We're only planning the project. Mr. Ms. Sit Ho was talking about URA projects that have been decided upon when we implement the project. If affected people need the help of social workers, we'll certainly make the arrangement. Well, you have to help them understand what you are talking about. Okay, next. Mr. Raymond Chan, Chairman. I think anyone with common sense who has been here since morning will know that the consultation on NENT has done very badly. It is not the period that has been gone through. And that is why villagers are saying that you should restart consultation afresh. I think they have a good reason. Now this is the end of the consultation period. The administration has said that all villages, residents have been consulted, but it's not just this session. Even this morning, many people said they did not know or only came to know it at a very late stage. The administration said that most of the affected villages as support or accept compensation. But then many villagers are objecting. They are saying there should be no removal and no, um, no demolition. However, V Rs have been seen to be distorting villagers' views. And the P S said that he has heard it, but this may be the tip of the iceberg. Kutong village, uh, villagers were very smart, so they are holding up their hands to speak out. But P S, I'd like to know whether you have received similar cases before. In other words, there were referendums done in a village and then the V Rs actually said something quite opposite to the result of the referendum. The latest is June next year. But before that, there would be reports. Say, I'd like to know whether you have consulted each village and what the view was. Was it a result of referendum or was it the view of the VR? Or were views given by certain organizations? So villagers would know whether the views have been reflected or distorted. And also, would you take the initiative to review every view advanced? Whether, like Kutong, the views have been distorted, would you do it proactively? P S, in PE three, we received almost ten thousand submissions. And there were results of referendums included. So we would consider and analyze all views. The P S is still saying that he will only act passively. In other words, he accepts submissions when villagers know that there are problems, but he will not do it proactively. Now why people say your consultation is fake? You say you take out press API. For example, on the twenty-second of September, in Po Wen Road in Shangshui, the Development Bureau took out a press API, but then it did not mention that there was going to be this forum later on in the day. So did you want people to know there is a forum or not? P S, we will step up our communication proactively with affected villagers. We still have some time. The P S, would you like to make a brief summary or give a consolidated response? If you can do so within three minutes, please. Is there another session? We have not heard all the views, just for this session. I think all deputations have spoken in this session. I will make a few points, I'll just reiterate these points. The planning for this NDA is really a plan for Hong Kong people. So we have a new town for Hong Kong people. The main thing is to tackle Hong Kong's long-term housing, employment and economic development. In PE three, we have said that we should make use of the new town mode so that we can make better use of time so that in terms of public policy or public facility infrastructure and other areas and aspects, we can do better complementation. So that when people move in, there will be the infrastructure. In terms of agriculture, we have heard the aspirations of farmers and will continue to work hard. As I said, our colleagues will step up the communication with all stakeholders so as to minimize the impact on them and also to see whether we can give them more assistance. As to the proportion of housing, we have heard very clearly that PRH and subsidized housing should be increased in proportion and we'll continue to look into that. As for Pingcha, Takulink, low-density development, we have heard views as well. We'll look at how the three NDAs can increase density so we can provide housing within the planning parameters. As for rehousing and compensation arrangements, we are doing a review. We hope we can complete it within twenty thirteen. We hope we will be able to make improvements upon the present arrangement. I'd like to thank members and deputations for their views. We have heard you carefully. We will also consider your views carefully and try to take your views on board in adjusting our plans.
Right, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Now there will be a break of fifteen minutes. We'll continue.